Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We are going to be getting started here shortly if you want to make yourself comfortable. Okay, it is six thirty and we're going to call the Castle Hills regular city council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. For our invocation, we have a guest with us, Mr. Keith Earl. He's a senior director of Saint George Episcopal School. Welcome, church. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Trevino and members of this council and esteemed guests. Thank you for the opportunity to offer this invocation as you begin your proceedings tonight. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we come before you this evening with gratitude for the opportunity to serve and support this community. I lift up these leaders who have been entrusted with the responsibility of guiding our city. Grant them wisdom in their discussions, clarity in their decisions, and strength to lead with integrity and compassion. May this council work together in a spirit of unity, seeking the common good for all who call this city home. Bless them with patience in their deliberations, respect in their discourse, and a deep commitment to justice and peace. We ask your blessings upon our city, upon its residences, businesses, places of worship, schools, and all who labor to make it a place of peace, prosperity, and opportunity. Strengthen those who serve in public safety, those who care for the most vulnerable, and all who contribute to the well-being of this community. We ask for your presence in this place and for your guidance in all that is done here tonight. May the work of this council honor the trust placed in them and lead to a future prosperity and well-being for our community. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Earl.
Thank you.
Okay, next up we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Rafferty, will you lead us? Okay, we're going to skip on item three for right now. And we'll go into citizen comments on non-agenda items. I think we only have one person signed up. It's Ms. Patsy Martin. Have your name, address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Patsy Martin. I live at two twenty-three Glen Tower. And I'm here to let everyone know that this Castle Hills Garden Club is promoting a wonderful presentation that it's going to be open to all the residences or all the residents of Castle Hills. It's going to be held in the chambers on April twenty-second, which is a Tuesday night at six thirty. And the presenter, and I apologize, I have no idea how to pronounce her last name, but her first name is Elizabeth and her last name is Niawo, I think. And she's a woodland ecologist with the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service. And the program is going to be about oak welt, which is obviously something that all of us are interested in. So I hope each of you will join us. We look forward to having our whole city come and be a part of our presentation. And also, even though it is on the agenda, I would like to say thank you to Ryan. You've been a wonderful city manager, a wonderful friend to many of us, and we'll miss you greatly.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, and we'll go straight into the consent agenda. Council. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. All in favor? unanimous. Thank you, council. First order of new business is a public hearing on a request from Suzette Cobb for rezoning of the property located at sixty-five fourteen West Avenue and at one oh two Cremaria Drive, Castle Hills, Texas, seven eight two and three. More particularly described as CHCB five seven seven eight A, block fourteen, lot nineteen, and CB five seven seven eight A, block fourteen, lot eighteen, respectively. From a single, from a single-family district to double a single-family district, it is six thirty-six, and we're going to open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak, this is your time. You can come up.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. My name is Cynthia Tames. I live at sixty-six oh four West Avenue. I did want to comment on the rezoning of that property. I just wanted to say that my husband and I have lived here in Castle Hills for over thirty years. When we first moved here, the house that is in our property was an older home on Pier and Beam. And so we decided that we wanted to remain in Castle Hills and as our family grew and our housing needs grew, we decided to build a new home on that same property. Because the lot is, you know, it's it's great, it's it's large. And we couldn't imagine living anywhere except for Castle Hills. It's a very secure place. It has it has amazing schools. And I just wanted to say that the approval of such rezoning, in my opinion, would threaten the character of Castle Hills and so I would I would not like that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, if there's nobody else signing to speak, we'll close the public hearing at six thirty-seven and go on to item six point two, discussion and possible action on a request from Suzette Cobb for rezoning of the property located at sixty-five fourteen West Avenue and at one oh two Cremaria Drive, Castle Hills, Texas, seven eight two one three. More particularly described as CHCB five seven seven eight A, block fourteen, lot nineteen, and CB five seven seven eight A, block fourteen, lot eighteen, respectively, from a single-family district to a double a single-family district. Mr. Rafferty.
Thank you, Mayor, council. The zoning commission took this item up last week, held a public hearing.
Okay, so just to get down on the record, the recommendation from zoning was to deny. I think we have some people signed up to speak. And Ms. Tames, you're signed up on this one. If you want to, you can, but you don't have to. Okay. I know we have the applicant here. If you would like to speak, you're more than welcome to as well. Okay, that case. Ms. Ma'am, council. Anybody have a motion? Discussion? Okay.
This is a complicated, to me, this is very complicated. I would love to see an opportunity for more homes to be built in Castle Hills. I also see the importance of the character of the neighborhood and the compatibility of what's already there and why the zoning commission would have voted to deny that motion, that request, and I'm going to have to vote along with what the zoning committee recommends.
Okay. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, is there a representative from the zoning commission?
No, I do not believe there is one here tonight. Mr. Rafferty just gave the recommendation. Do we have a motion? Mr. Schnall, does it die for lack of emotion?
Yes, because it takes a motion to make the zoning change. You were, Mr. Rafferty was correct in his comment to begin with of that, because it did come to the to the city council with a recommendation from the zoning commission for denial. It does require a three-fourths vote of the council to override that zoning commission recommendation. The applicant would get some closure with whatever action the council takes tonight. But no action is essentially a a non-approval. I think it would be better if someone would make a motion and the council could be on the record concerning this item. Our zoning ordinance does say that if a zoning application is heard by the zoning commission and there's a final vote from the zoning commission, there's a six-month waiting period before the applicant can come back with either the same or revised application for rezoning. That rule also applies to action by the council, but it would again be six months from tonight if there was a council vote to deny. Mr. Mayor, I was at the zoning commission meeting. I don't know if if you have a question that I might be able to answer. But I'm certainly willing to to try.
Mr. Schnall, my main question is, what was the primary reason the zoning commission voted down the proposal?
I think that Ms. Thomas's comment this evening about the several people came and spoke to the zoning commission during the public hearing or even during the actual discussion. But primarily during the public hearing and made the same comment that Ms. Thomas made this evening about the character of the neighborhood being changed. Ms. Cobb and her did bring in her application several letters of support from immediate neighbors. And there were several people who spoke at the zoning commission in favor of this application, but ultimately the commission voted for a vote, the motion was to deny. Four members of the commission voted deny. One member of the commission had received the letter as being within five hundred feet of the subject property, and he filed an affidavit of recusal.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll ask one more time if we have a motion. If there's no motion, we'll move on. Oh, you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I do think there needs to be some finality for the applicants. There may be a reconsideration in some regard. So with that, I am going to move that the proposed replat of sixty-five fourteen West Avenue and one oh two Cremaria Drive, that action be denied.
Mr. May, it's a zoning, it's not a plat, it's a zoning change. If you could revise your motion accordingly.
I'll amend it to suggest that the plat. That the property rezoning not be approved.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Haley. All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, let the record show Ms. Dean's abstained, and the motion passes. Thank you, council. And I'm going to go ahead and skip to item six point eight because it looks like we have quite a few people here for that. It's a presentation and discussion on Castle Hills Community Organization Public Art Initiative. Mr. Rafferty.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I do believe Councilman Joyce had requested Mr. Fitzgibbons to provide a presentation on public art. They've been working together on the Public Arts Committee, and so I think Mr. Fitzgibbons is here to give you an update and further presentation about public art and then also what we're doing with the commons as far as sculptures in the commons itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rafferty. I think Mr. Fitzgibbons has a presentation too, right?
Okay, before I start start on the PowerPoint. Last October, the city council passed a resolution authorizing the incorporation of public art for the into the city of Castle Hills. Since then, we formed an art committee that has met several times to come up with the this Castle Hills Art Initiative. Okay. All right, thank you. We have a mission statement, and I shall read it. It shall be the mission of the Castle Hills Community Organization Art Committee to provide inspiration, surprise, and delight to the citizens, workers, and visitors of Castle Hills through the promotion, coordination, and assistance with the funding of public art and public art programs in Castle Hills facilities, grounds, and streetscapes and other places as designated by the committee. Now, as you know, we are seeing the installation of seven sculpture pedestal foundations in the commons. And we have a proposal for the first Commons Sculpture Garden. Now, before I get into this, understand that most municipalities generate public art by designating one to two percent of their capital improvements towards public art. Well, Castle Hills is not going to be building a convention center or is not going to be building new fire stations. So we've come up with an alternative that some other towns, which I will show you in the PowerPoint, that have come up with a way to create public art for their community. The inaugural program will include the installation of seven pedestals, as I mentioned. They will be on the perimeters of the commons area, and what we will do is put together an invitation for sculptors in the Texas Sculpt, the Texas Sculpture Group is a internationally recognized organization that is an official chapter of the International Sculpture Center. There are about a hundred and fifty sculptors from throughout the state of Texas that are in this organization. We would send out an invitation to all those members to submit pieces for consideration of our first sculpture exhibition. We will probably get somewhere in a vicinity of forty or fifty applications, and in order to choose the seven first sculptures that will go into the park, we will engage a curator of a high-quality curator, and we would like to have the curator of contemporary art from the San Antonio Museum of Art to be the first judge or curator for this exhibition. After the sculptures go up, we will have the opportunity for citizens to vote on their favorite piece of sculpture in this first sculpture show. And when there is a winner of the seven sculptures, we will try to purchase that particular piece, and I will talk more about the budget later. Another project that we would like to entertain is, we have a wonderful new stage, commons stage out there for our musical performances and other events, fiesta, etc. And we would like to have an artist prepare a mural for the front part. Right now, all you see is a gray concrete in the front of the stage. But to get a San Antonio artist to design probably a tile mural, because if it's just painted after four or five years, it's needs to be redone. A tile mural, much like they've done along the Riverwalk, to really enhance that stage, making it from a totally utilitarian concrete slab to a work of art in and of itself. Also, we would like to consider having, I mean, public art is just not outdoor sculpture, okay? Public art is also painting exhibitions. It's also performance. It's also theater. It's also music. This is all considered part of public art. So we would love to see exhibitions in the city hall and other municipal buildings, and those exhibitions could be curated by the art committee ourselves. And they would be up for a much shorter period of time, not a year, but maybe three or four months. And this could be in other locations, even even some of the schools. We can have some of these exhibitions. That brings me to artists in the schools. Art programs in schools are very, very important because even if a student is not going to become a visual artist or a performing artist, what does art teach that individual? It teaches them two main things. Think outside the box, creative thinking. And by doing those two talents, by learning those two talents to be creative, to think outside the box, whether they become a lawyer or a restaurant owner or whatever, they will be more successful because of those talents. With these artists that are coming and installing artworks, it would be great to take advantage of them when they're here, to have them give some presentations to some of the schools. We have a, you know, a couple of high schools, a couple of elementary schools here. And we could have artists go into these facilities and give presentations and even some workshops. And I think that 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 could be a very, very valuable aspect of the art, school programs in the city of Castle Hills. Also, there's been some discussion for having public art for the underpass here on Honeysuckle at four ten. This installation, I'll talk about further in the in the PowerPoint, and then having other ongoing art initiatives. It is the intent to that the Castle Hills Art Initiative programming evolve, is sustainable, and continues to grow. Once we start getting into these programs, there are a number of different foundations. There's a Texas Commission on the Arts. There's a National Endowment for the Arts. There's many foundations. Cronkowski, many other foundations that support the arts, especially, I mean, HEB is a big sponsor of artists going into schools and doing these workshops and presentations. HEB loves to support education. Now, a proposed budget for this first sculpture, Commons Garden Sculpture, would be having an honorarium for the curator of a thousand dollars and an honorarium for each of the sculptors of three thousand dollars. And what that would be, what would be for the for the artist, let's say that the artist is from the Dallas-Fort Worth area to come down here to install the artwork, to stay in a hotel, pay for the gas money and what have you, they would get half of that. At the end of the year, when they come back to get their sculpture and take it back to their studio, they would get the second half of that honorarium. Then we would have plaques for the sculpture. And by the way, these pedestals are all going to have electricity, so we could light these up at night. How cool would that be to have evenings with lit sculptures where people from all around this city are going to want to come and see? And then it's very, very important also to put together a catalog, a small catalog on this first exhibition because what that catalog will would be would be a critically important piece of evidence to these foundations and grant funding organizations to see what Castle Hills is doing to be able to award us the money. And by having a very high-quality curator, such as a curator from SAMA, and the type of media I think this, the media will be explosive because Alamo Heights, Olmos Park, Terrell Hills, none of them have public art. Yes, the city of San Antonio does, but no city like Castle Hills has that in this town, and I think we will get a lot of media attention for that, both Texas Public Radio, the television, the Express News, etc., etc. So that first year's Commons Sculpture would would come to about twenty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars. Now, when the citizens get to vote on their favorite piece, the the sculpture will probably be in the area between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars. The art committee will commit to raising half of that if the city comes up with the other half. So it will be a partnership between the committee and the the city of Castle Hills. So if I could go through this real quick. Okay, what am I doing wrong here? Oops.
Ryan, Mr. Rafferty.
What did I do? I pushed the top one here.
Get by with a little help from my friends.
Which one are you pushing? Right there. Oh, that one. Okay. Okay, so some of the power of public art is it's transformative, it's place-making. I mean, you look at Chicago, which at one time had a just an empty, big, huge, empty lot downtown on Michigan Avenue. And after they put their sculpture park in, it is now the number one tourist destination in the city of Chicago, and that's because of public art. Now, what happened when they put that sculpture into that public art Millennium Plaza? Across the street were lots of buildings which had kind of offices and some storage areas and stuff were turned into high-end condominiums. Those condominiums brought such increased property taxes to the state of Chicago, the city of Chicago, that instead of taking twenty-five years to pay off their debt for making this sculpture park, they did it in three years. So public art contributes to the economic development of a community. It brings people, people come all over the city and all over the South Texas to see this. And okay, we're in Castle Hills. What are we going to do for dinner? Well, let's go down Northwest Military and go eat down there. Oh, look at this shop. Let's go to this shop. So it will bring visitors into our community, and it also enhances the quality of life. This is Wichita Falls in north of Dallas. It's a city of about a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and forty thousand people. Every year, they have an area outside the Kemp Art Center that is very similar to the commons, and every year they have a sculpture exhibition like this. And they get people from Oklahoma, all over Texas, and New Mexico to come and see these exhibitions. Here's one of their openings. I'm just going to go through quickly several sculptors that are all in the Texas Sculpture Group. This is Danville Chadburn. This was an installation at the Botanical Gardens. When I was at Blue Star, I used to curate a sculpture show once a year. This is George Tabalowski from Dallas, Fort Worth. That's another one of George's pieces. This is also in the Botanical Garden. Brian Wedgeworth from McAllen, Texas. It's another one. This is Susan Budge, ceramic artist from outside of Houston. Another one of her artworks. You can see how they enhance garden spaces. Another one of Susan's pieces. Senior moment, forgetting her name. She's an artist from Houston. And this was the first underpass that I did, which is downtown in Houston Street. And this was St. Paul's Square was having some issues with people not coming from the convention center hotels to their restaurants and bars and stuff in St. Paul's Square because of the vagrants and even robberies taking place underneath the underpasses, and this kind of cured that situation. kind of cured that situation. Now, this is an interesting photo, this is an underpass in downtown Birmingham, Alabama. And I don't know if you're familiar with Birmingham, but back in the 60s and 70s, a lot of people left the city center to go to the suburbs. And then around 2000, Rev Birmingham started to revitalize downtown Birmingham, and on one, there's a railroad, elevated railroad right through the center of Birmingham. And on one side, they built this incredible urban park with a stage, truck, food truck park, a pond, walking paths, et cetera. And then on the other side, they were putting in high-end condominiums. Well, the people living in the condominiums, if there was a concert at night, they would drive a block and a half, so they wouldn't have to walk under here, because drug dealers hung out there, and there was graffiti, and it was just a nasty underpass. Well, since I put this light installation in, not only has it made people not afraid to walk through there, it's become the number-two tourist destination in Birmingham. This is where people are getting their wedding pictures taken. This is an underpass, and people are getting wedding pictures taken. That is the power of public art. And this is downtown San Antonio. So, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments or?
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons, Council. We have any questions for him? Ms. Daines.
Hi, thanks for, thanks for coming this evening. I had a question on, I'm really loud, I have a question on the cost to purchase that $25,000 to $30,000. If council commits to the the initial cost on the sculpture garden, which you have listed at $27,200, would we be commit, like, would there be a promise made to the artists who submit their work, that we would definitely guaranteed be buying one of them at the end of one year?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, and and I guarantee you, we will be able to raise that money. I mean, I would like to have a 50-50 split, 50% from the the city, and then the art committee will raise the other $50,000, the other 50%, not 50,000, the other 50%.
Okay, thank you.
And after seven years, we'll have a sculpture park, and then we can focus on doing public art and other part. Northwest Military is going to become, with signage and everything going into, you know, going into Castle Hill. I can't tell you the importance of this marketing of our city, because I can't, for years, people ask me where I live, I say Castle Hills, you go, where's that? And I think this is going to help putting Castle Hills on the map. Anything else?
Mr. May?
I know this is not on our agenda for voting tonight, but I just want to comment that we have not one, but two underpasses here in Castle Hills, and adding that kind of lighting would also be a safety measure, because it's very dark, and anyone that's gone through there knows that if there's a pedestrian or someone on a bike, I've had a couple of close calls, but I just love the idea of having the illumination that's attractive, and so I would fully endorse that.
Yes, and and the challenge there, of course, is is working with Tech Dot, because when I first did the the installations downtown, I would go to Tech Dot meetings, and there would be all these guys with their arms crossed like this, going, we've never done this before, we can't do that. And so we invited the director of Tech Dot to come to one of the meetings, who was totally, he was, design enhancements was his thing, and if you notice, all the overpasses by the airport, there's a couple of different colors, they have inlays of the state of Texas, they have those spheres that are painted green, just kind of Art Deco stuff, and he looked at the committee and says, we are going to do this, end of story. And so it passed with clear, but I don't think he's still the director anymore, so it's just that Tech Dot has to be brought into it and get them to. Now, what 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 they said for the city of San Antonio was, yes, you can do this, but you are responsible for the maintenance of the artwork, and the city said, of course, it's not a problem. So if a light goes out, the city replaces it, not Tech Dot.
Perfect. And Ms. Haley?
I think it's very exciting that we're having this conversation and having these thoughts and plans and aspirations to elevate our city, and, you know, we can start with yes and try to figure it out, which we're not saying yes to tonight, but I think the door is wide open for a lot of great things to be coming here. So, and thank you, Bill, you're, you have a gift of your own art and how you have already done all this, you know, you know how it works, and we're blessed to have you here in our city. And our other artists that are here, we we have an art community that people don't know about, and it's going to be a fun story to tell, excuse me, so thank you.
Well, it's a two-way street. I mean, a city council that's this supportive of the arts is a blessing. I mean, we really haven't had that in San Antonio since Phil Hardburger was the mayor, and so you guys are awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. We do.
Councilman May, I would suggest, it's not for action, but I would suggest the art committee raising that 50% and then come to the city and then program it potentially into the proposed budget this summer, if the 50% can be raised for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. And we do have citizens signed up to speak. The first one is Ms. Moreta Scott. Your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Moreta Scott, I live at 207 Prince Drive, thank you so much for letting me speak. I'm so excited about public art. I just, I can't keep it to three minutes, but you think of San Antonio, and the, if if you saw up there, I gave everyone a handout on how important art is in education, and it is very important. As an art educator myself, I've taught elementary art, I've taught high school art, and looking at the city of San Antonio, when you look at the Torch of Friendship by the artist Sebastian, and it's that giant, beautiful, red statue full of movement, sculpture full of movement, and you teach students about that, and you show where he has art other places, you talk about Chafuli, he makes beautiful glass artwork, and we have a beautiful chandelier that appears in the San Antonio Public Library, the main branch. And you're taking students and you're showing them this art, not just pictures of it, you're showing them the art itself. And so I'm so excited that Castle Hills can be a destination to give our city identity, a place that we're collaborating with educators here, close by the, by here in Castle Hills, I'm sorry, to our elementaries, our middle schools, our high schools, and we're a place that our educators can bring their students to actual see art in person by artists that are well-known in the art community. So if you don't think that art is needed in the 21st century in education, as my handout says, think again, it's collaborative, it's, it's, they learn communication, to be creative, organization, problem-solving, thinking outside those boxes, they learn to self-direct, and the one thing that I want to talk about that most people don't is when you're taking an art class as a student, you have to get up in front of that class and present your piece, and you have to stand there, and people talk about your piece, and you learn about constructive criticism, and you learn how to accept that, maybe, maybe not, it's hard to learn, but in the classroom, a safe environment to do that, as an art educator, it gets kids up and past that number-one fear, which is public speaking, more than death, death is number two, public speaking is number one. So when you have art in the schools, and you're getting kids up in front of their peers, you're getting kids out, and they're speaking up, and they're learning to find their voice, that is so important. So please, I'm asking you to highly consider supporting our public art initiative, because we have a destination to bring students to see art in person, not just pictures, not just, you know, slides in a classroom, but actual art in person, and I'm so excited about that, so please consider it, because as an art educator, all it does is just give one more place for students to see and experience that visual intactness of art in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Okay, next up, we have Mr. Gary Sweeney, one of our own local artists, another, another one of our own local artists. That's your name and address in three minutes, sir.
My name is Gary Sweeney, and I live at 104 Briar Cliff in the city of Castle Hills. Anyway, my colleagues have done such a great job of selling you on this project, and I'm very excited, I have had the good fortune to do artwork, public art throughout the United States, and also I have, along the parking garage here at the airport, I have a set of what look like billboards that Pope General Fund of San Antonio, and they're extremely popular. There's one that looks like an advertisement for a ski vacation, and it says, San Antonio Winter Wonderland, and when it snowed here, it was, it blew up the internet on Instagram, because it was covered with snow. But anyway, I just, Bill Fitzgibbons is an internationally known artist and respected artist, I've shown internationally, not sure about the respect part, but I have a lot of experience in this, and we have a very solid committee of people that know what they're doing, and I'm very thankful for that. When I see the Commons and I see the possibility of having a sculpture garden there, it just reminds me of how great public art is, and I, if you've been to the Second Saturday in the Lone Star District, or if you've been to First Fridays in South Town, the King William area, you know that it draws hundreds of people into their businesses and restaurants, and it just, it's put them on the map. I just have some notes here about bringing art into cities is a win-win for everybody, it's a win from the community perspective, it's a win from a creativity perspective. I can tell you that bringing art and culture will enhance the value and quality of life in our community, and for instance, Santa Fe, the city of Santa Fe, art and culture generated $354 million in economic activity in 2023, and that's a number we could shoot for, I think, but probably not yet, but it'd be sarcastic. Anyway, I want to thank you for your time, and I'm very excited about the future of public art here in Castle Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Okay, last person signed to speak is Ms. Norma McClellan. Your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Norma McClellan, and I live at 204 Sheffield. I'm here to show our support for the public art initiative, and on behalf of the Castle Hills Community Organization, since they do fall under our umbrella, and we are happy to support the initiative. From a real estate perspective, in addition to our playground, our recent playground, now we're having pavilions, and we have our stage, I really feel that the art initiative would elevate our neighborhood amenities. And again, it's because no other neighborhoods our size or cities our size will be able to boast about this type of amenity, so. And then from the Castle Hills Women's Club, it just so happens that our theme this year was sharing community pride. So you can imagine, if we, if if this is voted in, which we do hope everybody, you know, does agree, the the pride that Castle Hills residents will have in saying, you need to come to our Commons, it's not just a playground anymore, we have art sculptures, and that's going to draw some interest, just like some of our high-end restaurants or our unique restaurants that we have, they're gaining attention, well, I feel this will too. So I just hope you do, once this comes to a vote or discussion, that everyone is in favor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Council, this is a non-action item, so we will proceed. We're going to go back very quickly, if you don't mind, and acknowledgements and presentations, we have the swearing-in of our new police officer, who's waited very patiently, Assistant
Thank you, this is something I'd like to start, when we start hiring officers to fill those vacant positions that we have, we want to bring them before council and introduce them to council, as well as the city of Castle Hills. So tonight, we have Officer Sarah Trejo, she started, yesterday was her first day, Judge McCall is going to do the swearing-in for her. She comes to us from Bear County Sheriff's Office, she was assigned to the jail division, so she has some experience, a little bit of experience, but we're getting some street experience, a little trial by fire yesterday was one of her first calls, but it's okay, she's doing great so far, so Judge, I'll let you take over.
Council, how are you? How are you? Okay. All right, I'm ready, thanks for seeing you again. Okay. Repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
Where's your hand? Your name?
Sarah Trejo.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties?
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of a peace officer of the state of Texas?
Of a peace officer of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve?
Preserve.
Protect?
Protect.
And defend the Constitution?
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
And of the state?
And of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Can we do this sign right here? Print your name and then sign right there. Council, usually when I do this in my court, I'll let them take pictures, do y'all mind if we bring her supervisors up and take some?
Please, go ahead.
Will you guys?
Ready, one, two, three.
Congratulations again, Officer Trejo, no better way to celebrate Women's History Month, and recognizing our third female patrol officer. Okay, Council, I'm going to move around just a little bit more, I know that we have some people here, I want to try to get to the, jump to item 6.12, it's a discussion and possible action on accepting the resignation of the city manager.
Mayor and Council, sorry, this is obviously a tough one. So, I was going to read you my resignation letter publicly, but y'all have seen that, so it'll be in the reporter for transparency reasons, so I just want to take a moment to sort of thank Mayor and Council for their leadership and guidance over the years. Sorry. I truly appreciate the trust and latitude you give me to do my job as city manager. Together, we work to make Castle Hills a better place, work, live, work, and play. As I've said many times before, success comes from teamwork, and I'm proud of the work we've done together to achieve our current and future goals. We develop long-term plans, improve the quality of life for our residents. We develop long-term plans, improve the quality of life for our residents, and work towards a sustainable governance for the city of Castle Hills. Over the years, I've consistently evaluated areas in the organization and city service with feedback from both staff and the city council. We have truly worked together to make this happen. I've had the pleasure of working with incredible employees who perform their duties with dedication every day, and customer service remains a priority for all of us. Thank you to the residents who I've been able to work with, work for, work with, and the relations I've been able to develop in assisting them as city manager. I like to take time to recognize both former and current council members. I've been fortunate to work with former mayor Tim Howe, Amy McLenn, Marita Scott, Marita Scott, who was just here. You still hear Marita? Oh, thank you. And the Frank Paul. I know Mr. Paul is here. I say the Frank Paul. So I'm also grateful to work with the current council members for the opportunity to work with you every day in and out to the best interests of the city. Each of you have always kept the community needs at the forefront, leaving personal agendas aside. That commitment to putting the city first has always made the difference. I'd like to acknowledge Kurt May, who stepped up in 2019 to make a real impact on our community. Without him and Mr. Isbrand that time, I'm not sure what the path of what the city might look like from that standpoint. Mayor Pro Tim Joyce, you've been involved in every countless projects alongside me, and I've been honored to see them come to fruition with your collaboration. Over the past two years, I've had the privilege of working with Beth and Denise, both councilwomen, whose experience, positive approach have been invaluable in shaping this community and its governance system. Jason, even though your time on council has been short, I'm glad I had the chance to work with you during my tenure. Now for the mayor. So we've been through many challenges together, especially in the beginning, but we've always managed to work them, work through them and see meaningful change for the city. Together, we've addressed critical infrastructure needs and strengthened relationship with partners across Bear County. I'm grateful for the mayor's dedication and for our shared vision for the future. During my fair share of the city of Castle Hills, it was not easy, and at times may have crossed my mind to say, I'm done. However, not mayor yet, JR called me and said, if I run for mayor, will you stay? And I said, yes. And I believe it was a Saturday night around 10:30, he called me and said, I think I'm mayor, and I said, I believe you are. The mayor-city manager relationship can be challenging in some cities, but here in Castle Hills, it's been effective and incredibly rewarding. The mayor, who I consider a friend, brother, like a little brother to me, of course, because of age, has always pushed me to be my best, and for that, I'm deeply grateful. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize former staff. You know, it's been seven years. We've had staff here, there, come, you know, even returned from that standpoint. But I want to recognize, you know, Janet Thielen and Chief Dover, Chief Siemens, Chief Zuniga, Kit in our permit clerk office at one time was great. Priscilla as well, previous city secretaries, you know, like Yolanda Benitez, Xena Tedford, and of course Brenda Craig for her hard work and dedication. I believe it was like three tours of duties here in that office. So a special thank you to our current department directors, Mr. Harada, and then our acting police chief, Ms. Vataco, Chief Ludwig, our administrative team, Mr. Zamaron, Ms. Davis, Ms. Selnek, Ms. Heinrich, of course, Ms. Wallace as well. She's always here to give me a direction and advice as well, fiscally, of course. Thank you to Rosario, Ron, Ernie, Stephen, and Rose. I thank all city employees across the organization. You've all demonstrated professionalism and dedication every single day. Making Castle Hills a great place to live and work. Notice I mentioned former chiefs and both police and fire over my tenure, but I've had one constant, and that's Rick. Thank you. I always said I wish I had a million Ricks. And to Mr. Schnau, your legal counsel wisdom has been essential in making that everything we've done has been legally sound. I've always said I don't move forward on anything till it's been blessed by Mr. Schnau or gives me the green light to sign anything. Thank you, Mr. Schnau. As I close, I want to reassure everyone that this decision was not an easy one. However, I'm confident in the direction the city is headed. Castle Hills is thriving, and I'm proud to have played a part in the success we're seeing today. Our organization is strong, and the team we built is capable and dedicated to serving our residents. I'd like to recognize my mom and dad. My dad is here. He's my role model. He's my role model hero. He's why I'm in public service. Over the last year, I have a great significant other who's been constant in my life and very helpful to me over the last year, and I thank her for support. And finally, my daughter, Alex, who is just six years old. I took this job. Sorry. She's the main reason I accepted this position. I've had the opportunity to see her every day and been a blessing to see her grow and succeed both academically and athletically. Thank you for allowing me to. Thank you for the honor of allowing me, city manager, for the past seven years. It's been a true privilege. Thank you.
Counsel, please realize that if we take no action, Mr. Rappley has to stay. No, I think it'd be appropriate for us to each have a moment to say something. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My wife and I first moved to Castle Hills almost five years in June, and I remember the first time I called Ryan, and he called me back. I got his voicemail, of course, but he called me back right away, and he, he treated, treated me the same then as he would now. He treats everybody like they're up here with us. And I, I hope we can find somebody who do, can do that. I don't know if we can, but I just want to thank you for that. I want to thank you and Mayor Trevino for taking on the Herculean task of fixing our streets. I like to say that we love the mid-century homes when we drove around, but we didn't like the mid-century streets. Well, we don't have to worry about that anymore. I just want to thank you for everything you've done, Ryan, and you are really going to be missed. And we may just have to come out there to Garden Ridge and drag you back if we can't find anybody like you, and I know we can't. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, Ms. Haley.
Well, Mr. Rappley, you know, I met your dad before I ever met you. And when I first had contact with you and we were trying to put some underground electricity at the home my mom was building next door to me, I said, is Sparky Rappley your dad? And he said, yes. And I said, boy, what a guy. And you're a chip off the old block. And you have been a friend and a guide and a help to so many, and I've learned so much from you, and I'm grateful for you. We'll miss you here, but we're all bitter for you being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haley, Mr. May.
Mr. Rappley, I never wanted to see this day come, and I know it's naive for the person of your talent would just stay still for the entire career, and we are going to miss you. I want you to know a couple of things. It is not missed on me that you've taken principled stands for the good of the community and fought some fights that should not have had to have been fought. Yet you did. You took stands that needed to be taken. You did your job. As someone who's spent their whole career picking off fights that needed to be fought, sometimes unpopular fights, it is always better to do the right thing, and you did. And for that, we will always be grateful, those of us here in this room that understand the whole history of the last five to six years. Wherever I've been throughout this city, whether it's been with the city council in San Antonio, whether it's been with our other leaders, our business leaders, is a point of pride for me to say that I stand behind you, have always stood behind you 100%, and we are very proud that you have been our city manager, and I hope that that tradition continues in the next iteration. And again, I just want to emphasize, I want to get back to the days when we glorify and we celebrate those who stand up and do the right things, not the convenient things. And you have done the right thing and not just the convenient thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May, Ms. Daines.
So Ryan, you, I'm just going to say again, it can't be stated enough. You were, you are going to be missed. We all have really enjoyed working with you. I have lived in Castle Hills for 17 years. I've only been on council for three. I really appreciate you welcoming me to council and getting me up to speed on everything that was going on. I totally agree that, you know, the streets and drainage projects are something that was one of the reasons that I wanted to get on council is because I didn't think that we were the city was spending our taxpayer dollars, you know, to benefit the residents, and I really believe that you kind of are, you steered the ship. You first you righted the ship, and then you steered it in the right direction. And, and we're so, so grateful for that. I mean, we had many, many years of being adrift, maybe is the right way. And then we've had a lot of contentious years more recently that you unfortunately had to suffer through. And, and you stuck it out, and that is not lost on us, and we are very, very grateful for that. And and I hope as, as Councilman Smith stated, that we can find somebody to fill these shoes. But we will be, we will be eternally grateful for all that you have accomplished in your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daines. I think it's been said multiple times that the last six or seven years have been a little bit challenging. As many of y'all know, it's no secret, we had our share of legal battles, and for every legal battle that we had, there were hours on the phone, either with Mr. Schnau, and a lot of that was with Mr. Rappley. Talking about what's going on, figuring out how we can do damage control for the team, how we can do damage control for the city. And so it's something that I know that Mr. Rappley internalized a lot of. And that's not his job, that he wasn't paid for what we had to do. But he did it, and Castle Hills is better for it. There was a time there where it would have probably been the smart thing to do and leave, but he had made a commitment to his daughter, to be close to her, to be close to his parents, and he made a commitment to the city, and he stood to that. You know, I've heard a lot of great things about him, but one of the best things about Mr. Rappley that nobody said is his ability to diffuse a situation. As the city manager, his job is fielding calls from residents, business owners, and people just coming through the city that are mad. And Ryan had this, has an amazing ability to answer the call for somebody that's mad and talk to them, and then next thing they're talking about country music or rodeo or somebody that they know in common. And the first couple of times I really had to listen to see if he was actually promising to them something that he was never able to give them. And that wasn't the case. I think to Mr. Smith's point, he just treats everybody the same and treats them well, and people just want to be listened to and respected. And so I think that's one of the biggest characteristics that we can take away from Mr. Rappley's time and ensure that as we go forward, we have another city manager that's like that. I don't know that we'll ever find another Ryan Rappley, but we can hope. That being said, counsel, I entertain a motion. Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Daines?
I move that we I sadly move that we accept the resignation of our city manager, Ryan Rappley.
Thank you, Ms. Daines. Second one, Ms. Haley. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I appreciate.
Yes, we, yes, we do have to, Mr. Smith. While we're right here, and I know we have somebody else waiting, a discussion and possible action on the engagement of and an agreement with an interim city manager, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. So in this item is introducing and then accepting an agreement for an interim city manager. And so you know, I, I tried to be careful and strategic to say, you know, who's going to come in next? Even in an interim to help sustain that ship, keep things moving. Very careful about who comes in next, and I, I've known Mr. Peralas for a while, a long time. And if there's someone I feel great about coming in here to help out in the interim, I like to say he's wiser, more experienced, and he'll tell you, I'm just telling him that, what do you say? I'm just saying that I'm old, but no. You know, Mr. Peralas is a TC, TCMA Senior Advisor. He's been in city government for almost 45, 47 years. He's been deputy city manager in Arlington, city manager in Leon Valley, city manager in Balconies most recently. And I would like to say that when David Harris left Balconies, it was kind of the same thing. They brought in Gilbert to kind of help move things forward and, you know, sustain that ship, and they ended up keeping him for another two years. So but what's in front of you is his agreements, and it's pretty straightforward. It's been reviewed by Mr. Schnau. And so he will step in in the interim. Hopefully, in the process of helping you find and select a permanent city manager. He has a, an extensive network throughout Texas and be able to help with the assistance of selecting a city manager permanently moving forward. At that point, Mayor, open the council any questions you might have, and then I have Mr. Peralas here to speak on his behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. And just to shed some light on some of the conversations, Mr. Peralas has an agreement with the ICMA, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Where he's a senior advisor, and so this requires that he's at no city longer than six months. So he's politely told me that we're going to need to move quickly so we can get our replacement. And all that to say, Mr. Peralas has agreed that he's not going to stay here. So when we post the job, we can make sure that we're casting a wide net so that everybody knows that the position is completely open, and we're looking for the best qualified applicant. Yeah, I, everything's right there, Mr. Peralas.
He's right.
Perfect.
So, yeah, I just want to thank you for the opportunity. Obviously, nobody told me that Ryan's shoe size was 20 before I came here, so the good thing is I don't have to fill his shoes. So, but, but I appreciate the confidence that, that you have. I, I think when I, when I spoke to the mayor, I, I basically told him one thing. This is an interim city manager position. I don't know how to be interim. I'm a city manager on an interim basis, so I will come in and help. Obviously, Ryan leaves a legacy and make sure that we, that we build upon that legacy, at least on the interim, while we, while I help you in your next chapter for, for this community. I'm a lot like Ryan. We, we live in the same arena, the arena of professional city management, and it, it takes a special individual to be able to succeed for the long term, and I take pride in what I've done. I take pride in knowing that, that Ryan has done excellent for this community. For us, it's all about the citizens, and they come first and they come last. So, you know, my, my promise to you is that I will keep the ship running and, and leave it in as good a shape as, as Ryan has left. So unless you have any questions, I don't have any other.
Thank you, Mr. Peralas. Counsel, any questions, comments, motions? Ms. Haley?
I move that we sign the agreement to engage Mr. Peralas as the city manager on an interim basis, which is not exactly what it said, but that's what he said.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Do we have a second? Second one, Mr. May? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Peralas.
Thank you very much. And Mayor and counsel, Mr. Peralas will come in Thursday and work with me Thursday and Friday and get him acclimated to current projects and setting him up with everything he needs to move forward. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Okay, I know that we have some other people waiting. Going to move around a little bit, counsel, just work with me. Six point 11, discussion and possible action on agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the placement of the of Transportation for the placement of the city pride signs and authorizing the city manager or mayor to execute such an agreement. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor Council. As part of our branding campaign, this is one of the deliverables that wanted that was identified and we wanted to move forward with was putting the new branding on signs around the city. Specifically in the areas where there's text dot right of way. We have to move forward with an agreement, the city pride signs. That basically allows us to be in the right of way of text dot. They come out and tell us exactly where to place it. So it's just a formal agreement with them to be able to have these signs in current text dot right of ways. And so there's an associated cost with that. I think it's in the back there with a total. Right now I have thirty-three thousand two forty for four by six signs, six of them to be sorry, to be installed. But first we have to get this agreement done with text dot. And once we move forward with this agreement and they've signed and sealed it back to us, we can move forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. So what was the total dollar amount?
Sorry, Mayor?
The total dollar amount?
I had six signs at three thousand two forty, I believe. So each sign five forty each? I believe in front of you, there's the one from the digi printing and cutting.
The packet, it says there's six signs that are four hundred dollars each, right? And then installation and breakaways are seven hundred dollars each. So like eleven hundred dollars each? Okay.
Yeah, it's for sign pole, breakaway pole, the standard that text dot is, that accepts. So we have to provide all this information along with the agreement. And once they approve it, we can move forward. But in conjunction with approving the agreement is proving the dollars associated with these signs for council's consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley.
So the total is, if we're gonna have the total, I'm, I'm not looking at the whole, the whole number. We, we need to add the installation cost into all of that. If we're approving that, don't you think?
Yeah, I think the total cost with the signs and installation is about six thousand total. Sixty-six hundred, I believe.
Yeah.
Sixty-nine hundred, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Uh, counsel, comments, questions, motions? Ms. Haley?
Well, I move that we sign the agreement with text dot, Texas Department of Transportation for the placement of city pride signs and authorize the city manager or mayor to execute such agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Do we have a second? Second one, Mr. Smith. Comments, questions? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Okay, we're gonna try to go back to the venue and do some cleanup here. Uh, next up, we have discussion, possible action ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero three dash eleven on canceling the May third, twenty twenty-five general election for the city of Castle Hills, Texas, to elect a mayor and two aldermen. Uh, Mr. Rapley?
Mayor Council, this is to, uh, can't, cancel the May third election due to it being uncontested for the two places in the mayor's position. Ms. Heinrich has, if you have any questions, she can respond to those. But this is just to cancel the election.
Perfect. Thank you, counsel. Uh, do we have Ms. Daines?
Yay.
Okay, is that? You skipped a step, Ms. Daines.
Well, I was just gonna, I, that was my comment. Yay. So I move that we, um, that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh three dash eleven to cancel the election on May third, twenty twenty-five in Castle Hills, Texas for the mayor and two aldermen.
Thank you, Ms. Daines. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Besides yay? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Uh, next we have discussion of possible action on the procurement of a shade cover from Shade Pro for the Commons Playground. As you know, canceling the election, we save approximately seven thousand dollars. Think, what better way to thank the community than by allocating some dollars for the community by purchasing a shade cover? And I think Mr. Rapley has more information on that.
Yes, so, uh, this is something that's been identified, the Parks and Projects approved. This particular shade cover color and everything at their February meeting. And so the idea is and Ms. Davis can help me on this one, that since we had budgeted and programmed in line item for our elections, we can move that to the commons to help pay for a portion of what the cost was for the elections. And then the other portion, which would be about twelve thousand, would just be from seed funding.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Counsel? Comments, questions, motion?
At some point, we'll do a budget amendment for those line items.
Yes, sir. Ms. Daines?
I was just gonna say for the record that it's, um, that we would be purchasing a thirty by forty four-post hip style, which it means it goes down on all the sides. Shade covering at a height of fourteen feet. And it looks like the total is nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Daines. Counsel, do we have a motion? Ms. Daines?
Um, I move that we, um, approve the procurement of a shade cover from Shade Pro for the commons over the playground.
Thank you, Ms. Daines.
Second.
Second by Mr. May. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Uh, next up, discussion, possible action, the purchase of a fire truck pumper for the Castle Hills Fire Department Chief.
So Mayor Council, as, as we've discussed, um, a couple of budget seasons in a row, we, we've talked about the idea of replacing the rescue with an engine. Um, I think Chief Ludwig came about two years ago. We talked about it before the budget process then. I think at the time, we still hadn't paid off the platform truck through the seven-year note. And then also we had, um, and Chief will go into that is if you recall, uh, in January, February of last year, we have an independent study done, a consultant to review operations at the fire department, its facility and equipment. And recommended this replacement of a rescue truck for an engine. I'll have Chief talk about what the mechanics of that looks like. And what he's passed out to is talking to Andrew Freeman about how possibly we can finance and or pay for this engine, uh, moving forward. But, um, I would, Ms. Davis, I think that we paid off the platform already. But so that's completely paid off as of this fiscal year. So, Chief?
Mayor, counsel, um, thank you for your time this evening. Um, as City Manager Rapley had discussed, I'd like again to bring up the subject of replacing rescue, which you're looking at on the screen currently. Some history on this vehicle.
I don't know what we're gonna do now that we're losing our IT guy at these meetings.
Yes. Just some history. Currently, the rescue that we have is a two thousand nine Ford F four fifty chassis with a thirty-year-old rear compartment box that's on the back of it. The reason the box on the back originally was on a nineteen ninety-six Chevy chassis, which was removed from that chassis and modified to fit the Ford. Um, I think in your packets that, um, that were handed out earlier, you saw some of the pictures of some of the wood blocking and some of the other things that were done to kind of make that fit that chassis, which, which has caused some issues in the past. This vehicle is predominantly used for EMS and rescue incidents. It has had, as it's aged over the years, it's starting to decline in having numerous and mechanical and electrical issues. Some of those issues, we've tried to take it back to the factory to have them repaired. Um, and because of lack of, uh, or discontinuance of replacement parts, um, they're unable to be replaced or repaired. One of the key components is the, um, the main electrical module in the unit, which has caused a considerable amount of electrical, air conditioning and some other issues with the vehicle that they actually had to figure out a way to kind of make the, those items still work so we could keep it in service. We had in the past, about a year ago, an electrical issue that actually caused a small electrical short or a large electrical short in the engine compartment, which resulted in the whole back rear compartment not having electrical service. So currently we use an extension cord to keep, uh, the medications that we have in the back, um, cooled in the refrigerator that we have. Recent repairs, which one of them included a complete, um, brake job and redo. That totaled three thousand dollars, but recently we've totaled up to five thousand dollars in repair for the vehicle. My concerns currently, currently we, our engine one oh nine responds to both fire and EMS incidents. Along with platform, which during fire incidents, um, lays the water supply line for engine. Uh, when engine one oh nine is out of service for repairs or so forth, we have to resort to using platform for all fire calls, um, because that's the only firefighting apparatus that we have once engine is out of, out of service. And it also handles any secondary EMS incidents that come in if rescue's already out on another EMS call. We either have to rely on the platform laying its own supply line, or we, um, if that is unable to do that, we actually have to rely on mutual aid units from other cities coming in to, to supply the supply line. Obviously, due to the length and the height of platform, um, with the tree coverage, some of the tight streets that we have, uh, some of the businesses that have, um, very narrow access points. Some of those areas are very difficult to get platform in, in case of a fire or an EMS call that we're responding to. Rescue obviously has no firefighting capabilities. My recommendation, um, was to go ahead and purchase another engine pumper to replace rescue. This would, um, solve a lot of the issues that we experience. Um, it would allow the crews to continue to use the current procedures that we do for, um, fire incidents where we're having an engine on scene with using platform to supply the line. Without having to rely on mutual aid units to, um, to respond to the scene to supply water. Uh, it would decrease the wear and tear on the, on platform and also the current engine. Engine one oh nine would be able to be put into a reserve status. Uh, NFPA nineteen hundred recommends that any frontline apparatus after fifteen years should be put into a reserve status and substitute a new engine as your frontline apparatus. This same recommendation, once, uh, Mr. Taylor Goodman had, uh, with Dominion Fire Consulting, had come into the department to evaluate both the department, the personnel and the apparatus. He too had made the recommendation that we should replace rescue because of its current condition and also the benefits from having a second engine in, in the station. Along with him, Chris Carden, who was the representative from ISO that came in and did our evaluation for our rating, also stated that by getting a second engine, it would strengthen our ISO rating along with helping us to better respond to the current fire load areas that we have in our business areas. A lot of our larger multi-story buildings, um, our large strip centers and so forth, would benefit with having a second engine to respond to those locations. Again, also, um, having that engine going into the reserve status would also benefit us in the long run. You know, and I'm sure y'all are asking why now? The cost of our apparatus has risen like no other time that I've ever experienced. I've been in the service for thirty-five years now, and I've never seen increases as severe and as abruptly as they've come. It is very difficult to even get a bid proposal that is good for thirty days or sixty days because the, um, the market is so volatile right now. And every, every thirty days, things are changing. Just in the last three years, the current truck that we're looking at has increased by a hundred percent. Another benefit of doing it now is also because as City Manager Rapley had brought up, the last payment on platform was made last year. So that would enable us to have the funds available to, to start on purchasing this vehicle. The longevity of Rescue one oh nine is uncertain. We're going month by month with it right now. So, um, it's, it'll become more and more unreliable as, as we move forward and us also, um, more expensive to do the repairs if the repairs can be done. A new engine would also meet the current and future needs of the cities and the residents. I think, um, that is the key component for me to really push this forward is to, to benefit the city and to keep us with the equipment that we need and the reliable equipment that we need. Uh, delivery of a new engine, um, would take up to twenty, twenty-eight months before it would be delivered. So that would also make it where the first installment payment would not be due until that time. Currently, um, talking with Ms. Davis, we currently have a hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars in the future pumper truck purchase account and an additional twenty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in the future rescue truck account. So we could combine those two accounts to help pay towards, uh, the purchase. Um, and additionally, this year, which is not part of those totals, an additional eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and an additional ten thousand dollars would be put into both of those accounts. And with the additional time that we have for the twenty-eight months, we could also budget over the next two years for, um, fiscal year twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. We could use those years to put additional funds towards the purchase. Current appraised value, I just last week took it, uh, Rescue into have it appraised for this, uh, for its current status. And it was appraised at nine thousand dollars. And now granted, if it lasts another twenty-eight months, we would actually have to have it reappraised and see what the value is at that time. But currently it's, it's at nine thousand. Uh, again, the cost, and unfortunately, it's, it's kind of blurred out, but, um, the cost was nine hundred, currently is nine hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for, for the apparatus. The other two additional quotes that we, uh, received from other vendors, uh, both of those exceeded one point one million dollars. Um, so in the vendor that we have chosen actually, uh, was able to meet our specifications on the items that we believe we needed on the apparatus. Uh, the other two vendors, um, weren't able to really, um, meet some of the other qualifications or specifications that we were requesting. As Mr. City Manager Rapley said, um, SAMCO Capital, um, they have sent in the handouts that you have right now. Their current interest rate, um, which is better than what it was three years ago. Three years ago, we were looking at seven and a half percent interest. So the interest rate now is at four point seven five percent. And, um, Ryan, um, with SAMCO had said that he was expecting that we could get maybe a little bit better than the four point seven five percent. But he too said the market's quite volatile at this time. If you look at the first page of your handout, that page is with zero dollars down. Where your annual payments stretched out over the seven years would, um, would vary between a hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and a hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred. If we were able to come up with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars down, which we're at about two hundred thousand dollars by the end of this fiscal year, um, our annual payments would be a hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred to a hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred. Um, our annual payments would be a hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred to a hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred. If we were able to, over the next two fiscal years, put enough money set aside to have enough to put five hundred thousand dollars down, and I believe that was the amount that was put down on platform for that purchase. Um, our annual payments would drop down to seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and up to eighty thousand, three hundred over those seven years. Well, that's, that is, that's the end of the PowerPoint, so. Um, I just, I'm looking for any questions and also of course, the, any of the council recommendations.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. May.
Yes.
So if we lock in now with Samco, uh, we're gonna be guaranteed no more than a four point seven five percent.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I, that is what I was led to believe. Um, hopefully we could get a lower interest rate. But again, working through the, the fine points with the vendor, um, again, I'm not sure how long that four point seven five, but he was not expecting anything in the, in the immediate near future to increase.
And just so that we're clear, we've talked about this in about four different uh, budget years.
Yes, sir.
Um, I mean, I'm searingly aware of that because it seems like we would get close and not uh, go forward, but I don't think the need is in doubt. There's a need here. I do have a question though about, um, and I think I already know the answer. Uh, the current federal administration has telegraphed that they're going to pull back from everything from training uh, to any kind of grant programs. Uh, is there any contrary evidence out there that other funding sources could be found?
Uh, no, sir, not at this time. Um, I just received notification yesterday that they actually shut down the National Fire Academy for training um, in Washington, so um, we're kind of in limbo right now. I do know that apparatus, as far as grants for apparatus are extremely difficult to receive because they're the most requested. And to get on the list of being con- considered, um, it's extremely low. Uh, FEMA will put out high priority. And a lot of times apparatus won't even be on the list for high priority any longer. Um, because there's so many asking um, for apparatus replacements. Um, so I mean, there's no reason why we could not ask, but again, the odds of us receiving that grant are, are very slim.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Daines.
Hello, Chief. Um, how, so you mentioned in one of your earlier slides that after um, an engine is fifteen years old, it should be put into like a reserve status. How old is engine one oh nine now?
Well, engine one oh nine is two thousand and eight, so actually it is fifteen years old. At the time that we had um, Dominion Consulting come in and, and look at the truck, I believe was twenty twenty-two. So it was about a year short of, of being the fifteen years. And again, you know, it, it's not a mandated law that's, that's set in stone. It's a recommendation by NFPA.
Right, but we've already got it. We've got, we've got a very, very old rescue vehicle and we have a aging engine.
Exactly.
We have a new-ish platform.
Right, and, and again, with the engine, current engine we have, they're built to sustain twenty, twenty-five years. Um, I came from a previous department that had a, two tankers that were well over twenty-five years old. So it, it's based on the use and the maintenance and, and we try to keep up on the preventive maintenance and everything that we need to do. Um, also, they're not making extremely long um, transports to incidents. So again, most of the miles and hours that are on it are, are close by, so it, it should last us, you know, into that twenty-two, twenty-three year frame. And at that time, when it is time to replace that engine, we would have this newer engine in, in hand and we could reevaluate um, at that time, if we want to continue with, with running two engines, but again, at that time, we're no telling what the cost of a new engine will be at the time that that one needs to be replaced.
Thank you, Ms. Daines.
Well, we've seen what the cost of waiting is, so I think it's time to, time to do what we need to do and make this happen.
Uh, Chief, I have a quick question. Are you looking for a direction from us on how to proceed with the financing?
Uh, well, the approval to proceed on the purchase. And then we, I will talk with city manager Rappleye and see how to move forward with the financing.
Okay, so you're just looking for straight approval right now?
Yes, sir, so I can contact the vendor and we can move forward with, with getting everything and, and looking at what, what the current price to make sure there's no changes in, in the future.
Perfect.
I, I may suggest council that um, we have Andrew Friedman, maybe be at the council meeting to discuss those financing options, because there's probably an array of financing options that could be done at this point. Um, obviously the need is there and I think um, that we need to move forward, but maybe having him here would make the council feel better to show you those options as our financial advisors, so you can pick an option. Chief has that option to go to the vendor and say, we'd like to move forward, here's our financing option.
And if I may add, the vendor also has um, financing options. They were based upon about the same interest rate that I had received from, from Andrew. Um, they do have, now, of course, this isn't a perfect world. But um, if they have a pre-purchase discount of up to seven to ten percent, so if you actually pay the amount in full at time of receiving the apparatus, you would get a seven to ten percent um, reduction in the overall cost.
How, how much was that? What?
Seven to ten percent.
Seven to ten?
Yes, sir.
I guess Samco can tell us that that pencil's out for us. Perfect. And Ms. Daines, yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I have another question. Um, so I'm looking at these options and one was zero percent down and then two hundred and fifty thousand down and five hundred thousand down. And I mean, those are just estimates I get, like if we have two hundred thousand in an account, then we could put two hundred thousand down. Um, you also mentioned that payments don't start until we receive the um, the, the engine.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that include the down payment or do we put the down payment to get started?
No, no, there's, there's nothing paid towards the apparatus until the, the apparatus. Um, and through the, the building of the apparatus, um, if I remember right. Um, we'll actually make two visits up to the factory to look at the apparatus as it's being, being made to make sure everything's being done the way it's supposed to be done.
Thank you.
Counsel? You have a motion? Mr. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, uh, Chief Laidawig, sorry, um, reaching out to the Oh, sorry, uh, reaching out to the um, the fire truck manufacturer to begin the process of purchasing a fire truck, a pumper, fire pumper truck.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do we have a second? Mr. Second by Ms. Haley, any discussion? Mr. May?
I, I just wanted to get it out there that have the options and I think uh, Ms. Daines is hitting on it. My comfort zone is that available funds that the chief has just outlined, which approximate uh, two hundred thousand. I'd rather front-load uh, that payment because the overall cost is, is reduced considerably. And so I would be in favor of that approach when we get down to the nitty-gritty.
Thank you, Mr. May. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, counsel.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry for the background noise. You had a former firefighter who wanted that engine to be done.
And, and thank you for following along with my very, very tortured motion.
Uh, next we have item six point six, discussion of possible action and awarding a contract for the FY twenty twenty-five mill and overlay improvements and authorizing the city manager or mayor to execute such contract, Mr. Rappleye.
Mayor, council, um, if you recall, during the budget process, we discussed um, developing a mill and overlay pro- program for a certain streets phased over three years. This would be the first phase. Um, it's programmed into the budget. We went through the process of bidding these out and as in the letter you see from Ardua, there were five bids and the results are shown in the bid tabulation summary there. The lowest bid was one hundred and twenty thousand uh, from Texas Materials. And if you recall, council, this is for three streets right now. Amerson Lane from Blewett to Jackson Keller, Castle Oaks Drive, Roundup to West Avenue, and then Lemonwood Drive from Oletto down to Northwest Military. So the bid, the lowest bid came out at a hundred and twenty thousand, which is actually below what the engineers had costed as well, so it's a good thing.
Thank you, Ms. Rappleye. Counsel? Ms. Daines?
Um, I move that we award the contract for the FY twenty twenty-five mill and overlay improvement, um, based to Texas Materials Group, based on the uh, recommendation of our Dura and our city manager uh, to execute the contract.
Thank you, Ms. Daines. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Second by Ms. Haley. Any further discussion, comments, questions? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Next up, we have item six point seven, discussion of possible action on selection of an architectural firm to provide architectural services related to possible remodel slash reconstruction of city hall and authorizing the city manager or the mayor to negotiate and execute a contract with the selected firm, Mr. Rappleye.
Mayor, council, as you recall, um, we had a presentation done months ago with uh, ideas to how to rehab, remodel city hall. Um, you also authorized uh, me to go out for bids for architect services. Um, at the time, I believe we received eight um, bids um, and/or proposals, sorry. And then um, Councilwoman Daines, Councilmember Jack Joyce and uh, Barry Middleman, the chairman of the ARC, were the group to review, score and rank um, each proposal and they selected three top candidates to interview. Uh, so over two days, they interviewed three uh, different firms and um, have selected a firm to move forward with for architectural services in this case. That point I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Daines.
Thank you, Mr. Rappleye. Councilwoman Daines.
Um, yes, so what, what he said, we were very impressed with the um, the RFQs that we received back. Um, we did interview three firms, um, Page Architects, um, LPA and Fisher Heck. And um, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, our group, um, Council, Councilman Joyce and Mr. Middleman and I um, want to put forward um, Page Architect Group to do the um, to work with us on um, pre-design and ideas to present to council as well as the residents of Castle Hills for improvements and/or, I mean, it could kind of go a lot of different directions with um, a new building or working with what, what the constraints that we have in this building. But we want to just move forward and get them, get the architect under contract so we can get started.
Thank you, Ms. Daines. I know you and Mr. Joyce put a lot of time into it. Uh, council, comments, questions? Mr. Smith?
Uh, yeah, I just, I'm just curious about, it's been a hot minute since we've discussed it, um, what the uh, scope of this work is for this particular contract.
So for this contract, the scope will be um, will be schematic design, pre-design, working with like getting town halls put together to get community input and through like schematic design phase, but it would not include construction documents.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I knew what, that everybody knew that we knew what we were raising our arm for when we do.
Ms. Haley?
When we get ready to do town halls and invite input from people, I want to make sure we include our corporate citizens, our, our commercial buildings, a lot of, there's a lot of property tax that comes from there too, so let's make sure we think, think community when we do that. That's all.
Any further comments, questions? Long time coming. I think it's uh, a great idea for us to start putting some plans together. We obviously can't afford a new city hall right now. But if we can start doing some phased approaches, then we can start making progress without throwing good money after bad.
If we do it right, we might be able to have a bond issue and make it, make it happen and we could. Maybe we can't afford it the way we're thinking, but we might think in another way and explore all of that while we're doing this. I'm just throwing it out there. If we're gonna, we've only been talking about this for twenty years. And I think if we can figure it out, start with yes and figure it out. That's my
Everything's on the table.
Okay, got it. Just making sure that's on the table.
As long as we can afford it. Okay, uh, so we have a recommendation, Ms. Daines?
Yes, can I make a motion?
Please.
Okay, I move that um, we authorize uh, the city manager to move to uh, move forward to negotiate and execute a contract with Page Architects for the remodel reconstruction of city hall um, up through the design phase.
Thank you, Ms. Daines. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. May. Uh, Mr. Rappleye had a comment?
Uh, just as written in the agenda item summary, from a funding standpoint, that the, the cost uh, to pay for these services will come out of seed.
Thank you, Ms. Rappleye. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Uh, let's see, discussion of possible action on ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh three dash eleven dash A, approving a budget amendment for FY twenty-five to include revisions to revenues and expenditures related to the North Manton and Carrollwood Drainage Project, Mr. Rappleye.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is just a housekeeping um, to show that it's programmed into the actual CO drainage fund. If you recall, we did the adopted budget, there's not specific to the Carrollwood and North Manton. Um, this was at the advice of uh, Ms. Wallace and Ms. Nor- uh, Ms. Davis to make sure that this is done through an amendment. Um, both projects are funded out of the CO twenty-three drainage fund. But uh, this is just more for a housekeeping to show uh, that where truly the line comes out of for funding for these projects. And then also to show that we're getting dollars reimbursed from Bear County as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rappleye. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero three dash eleven dash A, as stated.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Haley again. Any discussion? Uh, I'll
Can't see over me.
No, you're quick on the trigger.
Oh, oh, that's right.
All in favor? All opposed and abstaining? Let the record show, Mr. Smith is abstaining. Okay, thank you, council. Next on to item uh, six point ten, discussion of possible action and policy concerning expenditures from the branding campaign. Um, we have done a great job at getting money coming in from uh, various donors uh, for our branding campaign and so as we're going through the process, I just wanted to make sure that we have something on the record showing who council is giving directive to, to make purchases from this account. So that we can have our i's dotted and t's crossed. Mr. Rappleye, did I miss anything?
Yes, I believe so. It's uh, either coming up with um, specific policy to this. Or if I've had discussions with um, Mr. Schnaw and uh, Ms. Wallace about putting together a, a comprehensive procurement policy for the city that covers, you know, committees that work on uh, particular items related to expenditures, so. But yes, from an authorization standpoint, if council were to direct someone or uh, council committee, uh, in this case for the funds and these funds in particular uh, that are being utilized, I mean, um, I review them, Ms. Davis reviews them right now, so um, they're in line with what um, at least that there's checks and balances from that standpoint for both of us looking at it.
Perfect. Counsel, questions, comments?
Well, I just want to say that Mr. Joyce and Mr. Rappleye and the people from Creative Civilizations, we all reviewed the list of options for what we might do to add to this campaign when we started. And it was all, when we voted on this in August to approve the design, a lot of those examples were there. So, Mr. and I, we work on things and talk about things. But we talked about all of that and then as we went along, as funding, as money was available, I always talked to Mr. Rappleye about it, so there's never been any what's, what be the word I want? You know, I didn't, nobody went cowboy on this and said, let's just go do this. I mean, it's always been approved by Mr. Rappleye, so that's either verbally or in writing, so. Just, so we have transparency, which is our middle name. That's, that's the, that's how it went.
And to quote, uh, I, I would, in my discussion with, with Mr. Schnaw and Ms. Wallace, I would suggest us coming back with a comprehensive procurement policy. Um, that Mr. Uh, Mr. Peralas can work on with moving forward, but I, I think at some point getting a policy for comprehensive procurement for the city is a good thing moving forward. It could be pretty standard. Uh, Ms. Wallace has already essentially developed a policy from another city, so it would be easy for us to it would be easy for us to utilize that same policy moving forward.
And Mr. Schnaw, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know if this agenda item is written that generally, is that right?
It is specifically not written generally. It's specifically written for a policy or some decision, some direction from the governing body about the authorization to use money from the branding campaign fund. And I was told by either Ms. Davis or Ms. Wallace that that is what the the city has placed the various contributions that came in to support the branding campaign. It's my understanding that the expenditures have been for things like these two signs we see in the City Hall and lapel pins and mugs and other things that as Ms. as Haley has described, have been recommended and then approved by the city manager or the finance director and then ordered by and procured by the city. That that process is working, but it would be helpful to have the counsel confirm that that's the process that they'd like to have happen on these expenditures. And Ms. Haley and Mr. Joyce, I thought, were the ones who were kind of most involved in the conception and the implementation of our branding campaign. So it would be logical that that one or both of them might be the people who would be the primary folks making recommendations to the city manager in regard to this matter. But this item is limited just to the branding campaign fund. I agree with Mr. Rapley that a comprehensive procurement policy for the city would be appropriate. What Ms. Wallace has sent to Mr. Rapley and to me is not far off of what I would suggest we end up with. And we can have that back potentially for the April council meeting once Mr. Peralas and Ms. Wallace maybe take a look at what I'm going to do to her draft. But for tonight, it's, you know, do we want a policy or or want counsel, does counsel want to give some direction in regard to how the branding campaign fund money is dispersed or spent?
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Schnaw. And counsel, this was something that I brought forward. It's no secret that we've been through our share of litigation. And so as we're receiving money from outside parties, if the questions ask, how are these dis purchases being made? I think it would it's cheap insurance, basically, for us to be able to say that we're following the policy the council set that whether it's Ms. Haley, Mr. Haley and Mr. Joyce make the recommendation, whatever y'all feel is appropriate. But that we have a plan and that we're following the plan.
And the information's there, all the details of where the money was spent there. Ms. Davis has a sheet with all the details of the vendor and the amount and what it's for. So the information is there of anybody were to ask, we it's all accounted for every penny. So but I think a policy is good going forward, especially as we are gonna do a public art, we're as we get more support from the community for a lot of these projects, I can see that that could be a good thing moving forward. For this, we've done it. We have followed that procedure. So however y'all want to direct now, we're about done with buying what we need to buy. So.
Mr. May?
I was just wondering if other council members would agree that we should just send this for a written general policy and then considered in April. The other question I have is, would there be someone that would be willing to be the keeper of the branding funds that's designated?
Yeah, so.
Paper's your fund number thirty-five.
Very good.
Thirty-five, that's where it's already kept in the in Ms. Davis's office.
It's it's set up like yeah, it's set up like the seed fund, the ARPA fund. It's it's in a separate fund.
And and for a little background, too, when we started to do this, we talked to Mr. Schnaw about how to do it, how to set it up and just separated and have it. And when we went out to the community, we told the community this is what it was going to be used for. So there was really no surprise in all of that as far as I can see, but I'm the one that's been in the middle of it. So maybe somebody else might see that. But I think everybody's been very supportive and the financing financing help that we've gotten has really brought this all to life. So but we're very careful, you know, transparency is our middle name. So if you want to see where all the money went, anybody could see it. It's all available.
Ms. Daines?
I'm wondering if Ms. if Councilwoman Haley would be interested in being the authorized person to for the dispersment and approval of these funds.
I would do that always with running it by whoever in the city would do that. I mean, I'm sure, of course. It's always it's already all been run by. It's all it's all been run by before any money ever went out. So but to know what's going on, sure.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we move forward with Councilwoman Haley being the approver of the expenditures from the branding campaign fund. That's the end.
Perfect. We have we have a motion by Ms. We have a motion by Ms. Daines. We have a second. Second by Mr. May. Any discussion? Oh, yes, ma'am.
So my discussion was just that I also think that we should have a procurement policy and I would love to see that coming up in the next council meeting or so.
Thank you, Mr. Peralas. All in favor? Probably a good idea. Okay, and abstention, Ms. Haley? Okay, motion passes with Ms. Haley abstaining. Okay, announce the mayor on and council members on items of community interest. We'll switch things up. We'll start with Ms. Daines. Okay.
We have Castle Hills Cleanup Day coming up very soon. If I had a minute or two more, I would tell you what day it is. Twenty-second, March twenty-second in the morning. It's going to be a beautiful day. I don't actually know what the weather is yet, but we are hoping for coolish, warmish weather and lots of sunshine. So please come out on Saturday morning, the twenty-second, and help us beautify and clean up Castle Hills.
Thank you, Ms. Daines. Mr. May?
Just a reminder, we're a little over a month away from Castle Hills Fiesta. And I know one person, Judy Crawford, would be delighted to get a ring for volunteers. Anyone that's out there listening, give her a ring. She knows thousand jobs that need to be done.
Thank you, Mr. May. Ms. Haley?
I'm happy to see Mr. Rapley, Mr. Sparky Rapley tonight. He's a personal hero of mine, just because I only met him once before I ever figured out that Ryan was his son, but I never forgot you. And I'm very happy that you're here tonight. And I know you're very proud. And we are too. So and thank you again, Mr. Rapley, Ryan Rapley, for all that you've brought to our city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Mr. Smith?
I'd just like to read out Councilwoman Haley's remarks and just just how much we appreciated your work here, Mr. Rapley. And if you think we're not going to let you leave without giving you a little stick for it, just wait till Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Counsel, I think it's worth mentioning again, just the amount of progress that we've made in seven years. It's kind of crazy when you sit back and think about the branding campaign, the streets, the new street signs, the improvements in the commons. We've done quite a bit and that's with quite a bit of headwind as well. And so that's really done with a great counsel, with a great team. And of course, Mr. Rapley. And so I'd like to thank Mr. The original Mr. Rapley for for doing such a great job at making a son. And I'm not talking about Dan. I'm talking about Ryan as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you, mayor. He my little brother is a smarter one. So but.
And I'd I'd also like to thank Alex as well, because we know how much time she spent here. You know, Ryan's commitment to the city has come at a little bit of an expense to her being an assistant finance director and an assistant secretary and assistant city manager. So thank you so much. Know that your sacrifice means a lot to a lot of people and we appreciate you.
Yeah, she's she's spent a lot of time at meetings here. So not sure she remembers what meeting for what, but a lot of times been spent here and I've seen her grow up here and you know, become integrated with with the staff and and you all as counsel over the years. It's been great. And I appreciate everything that y'all have done and especially, you know, giving me the latitude to do my job, really. It's 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 a big deal when you talk about council manager, former government. You know, it's 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 eye opening when, you know, you work as a team and you get things done. And I'm appreciative of you know, all of our staff and you as well. So and I'm appreciate, you know, obviously, my daughter's here, my dad. You know, he he spent many years on a city council in a nearby city and a firefighter for, I don't know, like fifteen years. So he he's done a lot of public service and that's the reason why I'm in this chair years ago is a result of that as well. So but I thank y'all for everything I do.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley.
On a side note, I'm going to help alleviate our public works by getting a dumpster here on Friday for brush and leaves. I've heard from some residents asking when it's going to come back. And so I'm working to get that here Friday. Help the guys out on the crew. I've seen a lot of bags out there and and brush. So this will allow residents this weekend to drop by and drop off some brush and bag leaves. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Counsel?
I I I forgot. I forgot something. Sorry. Can't help it. So speaking of that, as you let people know things, if we can make sure that we're keeping track of all the city's posts on social media, you know, we've we there's been a big push to have more news out in so many ways. And as much as we can say we're keeping up with it, you know, and encourage people that we know if they're not, you don't see them. You can't tell people what to do. I get it. But you can encourage people to follow. That's where you get informed. That's how you know. And there's been a lot of good news being shared on this through the city's Facebook page and our Castle Hills page doesn't have everybody in the city on it. So if we can help drive people to that, encourage them to follow as well, because they'll be now we people will know if they're on social media. You're going to put on a blast, I guess. But there's lots of ways we can do that. So let's do that.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Okay, all in favor?
That was that.
Adjourn in the meeting?
Motion to adjourn. Oh, yeah.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. All in favor? Unanimous.
All right.
Have a good evening.